Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the public session of the Committee of the Whole Meeting of the Halton District School Board on October 15, 2024. I hope everybody had a lovely Thanksgiving weekend, so let's begin. Please be advised that the meeting is being recorded and is being livestreamed on the hdsb.ca and on the hdsb YouTube channel. In the room, we have trustees Ahmed, Amos, Shalworth, Rocha, and Gray. Online, we have trustees Danielli, Zhang, and Chair Collard. And we have a number of trustees who will be arriving a little bit late because we are facing some traffic issues in the region. And Associate Director Salmini, can you tell us who's here from staff?
Yeah, good evening. Tonight, I am the director's designate, and we have staff here to support the agenda.
Thank you very much. Tonight, I will be honoring the land. We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which the HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty and title lands of the Anishinaabe and Ojibwe Michisagi Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michisagi Territory, in the past and present, continues to host both Indigenous and non-Indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impact of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities, and Indigenous rights while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Donna, would you like to move a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Jean?
I will.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Seeing none, it's approved by unanimous consent. In relation to our agenda this evening, are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest? Seeing none. We'll move on to item three, which is consent agenda. And tonight for approval, we have the minutes of the Committee of the Whole September 17, 2024 meeting. I will put the motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the board approved the consent agenda action items as listed on the October 15, 2024 Committee of the Whole Meeting agenda. Kelly, would you like to move a motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Does this item need to be pulled for discussion? Are there any objections to approving consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And for our colleagues online, if you need to speak, please remember to raise your hand. Thank you. All right, on to our discussion items. Item 4.1, draft multi-year strategic plan. And in front of you, we have an update from the Multiyear Strategic Planning Committee, along with a draft of the multi-year strategic plan for the year 2024, 2028, for our consideration. You will recall that four trustees are members of the steering committee, namely myself, Amy, Robbie, and Kelly. Since March, the Multiyear Strategic Planning Committee has been working with a third-party consultant to engage the community staff and trustees in the priority-setting process. The multi-year strategic plan report attached to this report is a third draft. We all had several opportunities during the course of this work to provide our feedback and ask questions. All trustee feedback was considered by the steering committee. I'll do a quick recap to remind us all how we got to this point. As you will recall, trustees had a number of specialized meetings and full-day working sessions with opportunities to review the fundamental elements of the strategic plan, have discussion regarding our reflections on the current multi-year plan and our aspirations for students, conduct an analysis of strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities in key areas, including student learning and workplace culture, review the consultation report, which included data from consultation and environmental scans, consider alignment with the Ministry of Education directives, and define key objectives and metrics. And so the final draft of the multi-year strategic plan is in front of you for discussion. If there are any glaring errors or omissions, please do bring them to our attention so we can bring them back to the steering committee. The steering committee will be meeting following this evening's discussion to review and reflect on the feedback, making any necessary adjustments to this draft. And then the revised plan will then be presented for approval at the November 5th board meeting. So I will now open the floor for discussion. Okay, Tanya?
Ah, thank you. So, let me start off with something really easy. The imagery that's in this plan, is this the imagery that's being proposed as part of the package, or is this still just placeholders?
I'll invite Heather to be able to respond.
Through the vice chair to trustee Rocha, the images that you see in the draft strategic plan are suggestions of what could be in the plan, but it's definitely up to the feedback of trustees if you'd like to change any of these images. The ones that are chosen are all HDSB images.
Okay, so maybe this is a discussion we can have afterwards, but I do have some issues with the imagery that's being used. And the first one that was glaring that I'll only speak to today is the cover. When I first opened this, like, to me, this looks like a strategic plan for a sporting event, not for a school board. So maybe something more classroom-related? So that's the only one that I'll speak to this evening. The other question I have, I have several actually. There's a commitment called kindness, connection, and community. To me, and I've said this before, I go, I don't see a place for this in a multi-year strategic plan. If I look at a plan over several years, whatever we put forth needs to be measured. To me, you cannot measure kindness, and kindness is something that should be interwoven in everything we do, not to have a separate commitment for kindness, along with connection and community. When I look at the write-up for that page, it's... There's not much there. And really, when we look at a commitment that talks about fostering empathy and respect and trust, all that can be observed in all the other commitments. So instead of having six commitments, I would strongly recommend dropping it down to five. And I'm open to anyone else in the room who would like to convince me otherwise or agree with me. Thanks.
Thanks, Kelly. So to the point of the six commitments, I seem to remember last time around, we talked about those magic numbers. So I think it's three, three and five are magic numbers, as far as how many you have, like six. I'm sure it was three and five, so you remember that? The last time around, we had, we had, when we were talking about the last multi-year plan, we talked about magic numbers and how important it is to have that magic number because you don't want to have too many or too little. And I'm sure the two numbers that we talked about were three or five. How many are we going to have? And so last time, we settled on five. Again, I think simple is better. I think... How do we look at this from a point of view of the school? So again, further to what Tanya was saying, I do think kindness should be seen as a backbone of all of the commitments. That's just part of what our school board is. So yeah, just, I'm thinking magic numbers and what we talked about before.
Kelly?
Just, I quickly Googled magic numbers, and they say four or multiples of four or tend to be the multiple, the magic numbers. But seven is also a magic number, so I guess it depends on... I really like having the kindness as a pillar because with the way things are in our world, in our communities, this highlights something that we should all be focusing on, that we should all be thinking about, that we should all be striving to achieve, and it's not happening. And maybe by having it as a pillar, it will happen because it's something we can focus on. And if you do feel that the outlines are weak, maybe they can be strengthened. But I do, I'm strongly in support of keeping it because I think it's something that we as a board need to highlight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the steering committee who would like to speak to this point?
I can speak to it if no one else has. I hope you can all hear me.
We can. Thank you, Amy.
Okay, yeah, I remember having a lot of discussion about this when we were meeting as a senior team and trustees together. And there was a lot of discussion about the current political climate, geopolitically speaking, what we've all been through in terms of the pandemic and the polarization that people are feeling. And this resonated with many folks around the room, myself included, as being something that if we could all focus on intentionally, that this would be good for our students, good for our staff, and good for our communities. And so I support this as being one of our commitments. And I think it's something that is absolutely underpinning everything that we do as a school board, but so is well-being, and so is student achievement. And so is, you know, equity and inclusion and human rights. So if we're going to highlight those things that we think are timely and as well as being things that the ministry expects us to be focusing on, I think kindness really goes a long way in taking the sting out of what we see happening so frequently in our society these days. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. I can vouch for the discussion that we did have at the steering committee because we did, we did consider whether this should be a standalone commitment or should be woven through the other commitments. And there was a very strong, shall I say, support for keeping this as a standalone commitment to impress upon the HDSB students and staff and the community at large that we truly value this and want to make sure that that is a commitment that we uphold as a separate entity while also ensuring that it's interwoven through all the work that we do. I'm going to ask everybody to sign into press rounds so that I can manage the discussion, please. Thank you. And those online, just put up your hand, please. Yeah. Okay. Okay, I see Curtis, Director Ennis has put up his hand, so Curtis, over to you.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Joanna. I hope you can all hear me.
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, so yes, everything that's been said in support of kindness as a, you know, a priority, I think is, is... I don't need to reiterate those points. I really like the arguments, but forward. Tanya, I would say that when we prioritize something, it puts it front and center. It makes everyone know that this is work that we must absolutely continue to do. And when things are interwoven, my experience has taught me that when things are interwoven, they often get lost. And so we don't want this to get lost in for all the great reasons that were stated earlier.
Thank you, Curtis. Jean, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you very much. Like Kelly over here, I quickly did some Googling because I'm listening to Tanya and I'm hearing what she's saying about kindness and measurable, being able to measure it. But I think there's lots of examples of kindness. I came up with this, the 12 rules of kindness, which is anti-bullying, collaboration, compassion, connection, courage, culture, diversity and inclusion, kindness, leadership, leadership skills, learning and development, mindset. There's a whole bunch of different sites that talk about, can you measure kindness? And they do acknowledge that, to Tanya's point, it is difficult to measure. However, it is certainly an attribute that is worthy of inclusion. So whereas it can't be measured, I think it can be an overlay of the way in which we respond and work with one another and what we want to impart to the students in our system. So I hear what Tanya's saying and can't disagree with her. But I would, you know, probably concur with the other members of the committee that were involved, that there is a place for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Margot? Thanks, Joanna. So I kind of, I want to come back to really what everybody has said. And I'm coming back to Curtis, what you were talking about, how if it's interwoven, it often gets lost. So I look back at our previous multi-year plan, which has those six words, and I had to have Tanya read them because I forgot my glasses in the car. I think it was adaptability, innovation, engagement, relationships, communication, and accountability. And again, I think when we did this then, those did get forgotten. Those words, no one ever looked at those words. So I think it's how we present it. And when we're looking at the idea of kindness being at the forefront and center, could we not have that, not as interwoven, but as an overlay, almost like an overarching pillar? Because again, coming to what Jean just spoke to, when you were talking about the list of kindness, I was, when you were saying them, I was looking at the different bubbles here and thinking, well, yeah, that fits there, that fits there. So is there a way that we can present this in a way that kindness doesn't get lost and is more exemplified or the focus that overarches all of our commitments across the board? Because again, I think having it as just a standalone doesn't allow us to see it in relation to the other pieces, which I think is really important. So looking at how we do it in a way that it doesn't get lost as a, what were the words you said, Curtis? I'm sorry. Overlay? Or I said overlay, whichever it was. But trying to look at how we create it in a way that we are presenting it, the kindness, I almost think of it like a rainbow along the top, that it's the, it's the sort of the, it's the starting point for everything. We start everything with kindness, whether it be well-being, whether it be human rights, whether it be learning. It all is focused, or it's all based on kindness. So having kindness separate, to me, takes away the power that I think is so important to focus on for it. Thanks.
Okay, next on list, Tanya?
Yeah, so I'll keep going on the kindness theme, kindness, connection, and community. When I look at the description, it talks about fostering empathy, respect, and trust. The word respect is used throughout the document. But we don't have a commitment called respect. Kindness is also seen in the environment and global citizenship. It's included in well-being. It's included in learning engagement. So to me, I don't necessarily, I mean, we're a school board. We're in the business of education. Yes, kindness is important. But I don't think we need its own little bubble called kindness, called connection, called community. All that fits within all the other, I'm going to call them bubbles because the presentation looks like bubbles. I don't, I don't think we need something separate. And instead of having six, like, let's not spread ourselves thin with all these different commitments. This stuff already exists in the other five. Let, like, let, let, let's narrow our focus, not narrow, but let's, you know, let's not spread ourselves thin, trying to come up with parameters on how to measure this. To me, the more bubbles, commitments you have, the more measurements you have to have in place. It's a strategic plan. Whatever you put forth needs to be measurable. And to Jean's point, there are different ways we can measure, but now we have to develop all these new measurements to accommodate this one commitment. Whereas if we keep those themes, kindness, connection, community, within the other five commitments, I think we would be serving the board much better because it'll keep us focused on what we're in the business of, which is education.
Thank you. I see Shinny has his hand. Over to you, Shinny.
Thank you. I have, Tanya's question is very important, but now I have two other questions, so maybe we can come back to Tanya's question. And my two questions about the content in the document on page five and page six. So on page five, Indigenous education, objective one. It says, "Advanced students and staff education in Indigenous rights, truth, and responsibilities and reconciliation." Because we already have Indigenous education. So my question is, how can this object to be measurable and achievable? For example, if we already have that Indigenous education, do we have... For example, if we already have that Indigenous education, do we have uh, connect our program or course to any Ontario curriculum? And do we have any textbook available for the teachers? So that's my first question. Thank you. Or, okay, I can also put my second question. Second question is on the page six. Uh, page six, uh, Human Rights, Equity and Inclusion. So in the objective number two, it says, "Reduce Gaps in Achievements." I'd like this objective to be clarified or uh, considered in a different way to, to state a commitment. Because reduce gaps and achievement, uh, this is not very, very clear to me. Our board, we need to maintain a high level of uh, achievement for all students. We like to, to uh, increase the quality. That's already, we have commitment to do that. And uh, if we read, we want to reduce gaps in achievements. So for, for the readers to understand how to, how can we understand this? Uh, we can make everyone very high score or make very, very low score. And we know when we do the, the equity, we can provide students with equitable opportunity. But equitable outcome, this is not possible in the, in the world. It never happened. So this is, for example, we, all the students, we pay, even we have great effort. Someone go to university, someone not. So this is the reality. So this one, this, this objective, we need to clarify. Otherwise, it's not measurable and not achievable. Thank you.
Okay, Shinii, thank you. So if I understand you correctly, you're looking for more clarity around how it's framed and phrased and looking for um, uh, measures that will be able to um, measure what we're attempting to um, achieve.
Right. On page five, Objective One and page six, Object Number Two.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so I'll attempt to, to respond to that in terms of um, what you had just shared with us. We certainly um, want to have high um, success for all students and for um, every student. And it's not about lowering the bar in any way, but it's about um, creating opportunities and um, looking at students that have disproportionate outcomes and looking at the data for that to make sure that we are um, enabling all students to achieve at higher levels. So I, I'm not sure if that answers your question, but it is looking at our existing data and looking at students that have not performed and trying to um, make sure that we're creating spaces and opportunities to um, have all students perform at a, at a high level.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next speaker, Kelly.
Uh, thank you through you. Um, I just want to get back to the kindness piece. Um, so um, I can't remember who said it, but we did have a, a fairly detailed discussion around whether to keep this as a, as a commitment or to keep it with a commitment combined with connection and community um, at the um, the steering committee table. And part of this, what we heard was, there are schools who are already um, um, doing programs within their schools focused on kindness. And that if we were to make this a uh, pillar or um, a focus, um, they would, they would, they said that they would embrace this because that it would validate some of what they are trying to achieve within the schools and that, and the fact that the whole school board was embracing it um, um, would mean a lot. And the fact that the connection and community, apparently through the feedback, um, when it, um, the uh, company was going out, um, they were hearing that this was something that was felt was really needed from a lot of the people who were surveyed. So um, I do think there are other ways of measurement because of some of the programs that are in some of the schools. And that if we could get that spread through all the schools and therefore then spread it out through all our connections and into the community. I mean, we could be a leader in the province about setting um, a, a tone for our workplace and a way, place to go to school that is um, kind and has respect and has trust as opposed to um, having um, concerns about um, the community and the unrest and the things that are going on and around our schools that come into our schools. The other piece of it is, um, we were one of the only school boards that didn't have any repercussions um, at the beginning of this month. Um, and part of that is because of the examples that are already being set at this board from the director on down. And what a great way to continue this message. Um, so to me, this is a reinforcement piece and those words, those six words were never, ever focused on through our last multi-year strategic plan. They were basically useless. There was no look at them. They were just there. So by having this highlighted, it will be something that gets focused on. Um, to me, those six words were meaningless because we never, ever got feedback or um, whatever on them.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And yeah, tho- those were exactly the discussions we had around this commitment at the steering committee. Um, and everybody felt pretty strongly about uh, making that a separate commitment to um, to really um, um, show the system that this is important to us and it is not just a, a statement. Um, it is actually a, a true commitment and everything will be um, done with that in mind. Um, next speaker is Donna.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Uh, and I, I, I'd like to weigh in on the kindness, but I'd also, um, I realize that I'm treading a very fine line. I was able to attend the um, the day and a half and have input in August, but I did not sit on the steering committee. I have not been a part of that work. And I recognize that a lot of people put a lot of work into this. Um, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna be the one at the side scene, well, I don't like this, I don't like that, because that's, I'm not who I am and who I want to be. Um, the kindness, I think we have people that think it's really, really important. We have people that think it's not important at all. It should not be as its own pillar and I respect both. I can, I can be swayed either way. I've listened to both arguments. The one thing I have learned, I think this is my fourth multi-year plan, is that you never, ever get a plan that 100% of the people go, that's it, we got it, it's perfect. There are always gonna be people that think, say, I think this should be included or people that say, I don't think this should be included. And I think the really important thing is, is that we find something, the question I always ask myself at these times is, can I live with it? Can I publicly support it? Um, and if I can do both of those things, then I don't necessarily um, pull things out. So for me, I would ask the kindness piece, what harm does it do to leave it in? Um, I don't personally see any harm in leaving it in. And so I would advocate for leaving it in because I do think it sends a very, very strong message. I have heard what's been said about the measurements and things like that. I think we can find a way around that. But I, again, my experience has been, you are not going to find something that 100% of the people agree with 100%. Um, so really, we've got to make this the best we possibly can and then turn over staff and let them work on the measurements and everything else. So I just wanted to um, to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. And next on the list is Carol.
Thank you. Um, I would agree that um, it, kindness doesn't necessarily need to be its own um, pillar. Are we calling them pillars or commitment? Thank you. Sorry, I have to retrain my language. Um, I think it, it is, as I think a few people have said, I would just reiterate, it's throughout. And kindness is more of a feeling and an atmosphere that I believe comes from achieving the other commitments that have been outlined. Um, one of my concerns, I guess, would be reporting, but the other one would be um, how we're dedicating resources. Because when we look at our multi-year plan and when we ask staff to report to us, we're looking at both the reporting aspects to determine whether we're making gains, but we're also looking at budgeting. And I'm having some difficulty understanding and I think it was mentioned that maybe the language and the way it's described is the issue as opposed to it being an issue on its own. But I'm having some difficulty understanding um, exactly how this would be implemented. But the ideas around kindness, connection and community certainly are built into the well-being commitment. And I think that we would find that kindness is a value that all of our staff project in schools all the time and hope to have students um, also emulate. And it comes from students learning the skills that parents were asking for in the consultations. Critical thinking, the ability to understand propaganda versus evidence-based information. All of these strategies of teaching and demonstrating good, evidence-based decision-making and critical thinking will lead to students understanding each other better and therefore an atmosphere of kindness, which I think we all agree. I was here for the um, roundtable discussions and I was very much in favor of the idea of kindness, but I wasn't thinking that it would be a commitment on its own and perhaps a department. Are we having a department of kindness? I'm just having some difficulty when I look at the quantitative measures on the back as well as qualitative, seeing how this commitment will be both reported on and budgeted. So that would just be a few of my concerns. Um, and then separate from that, I have a question. I noticed that there's no mention of ensuring equal access for students who have challenges related to socioeconomic factors. There's a few mentions and I think Shinii brought up um, equitable outcomes around identity groups, but I haven't seen anything about looking at socioeconomic factors. Um, I believe this information is available. We just haven't looked at it and it's not being addressed in here. And I'm just wondering if that was discussed at the steering committee at all. Thank you.
And uh, if there are any steering committee members who want to chime in, please do so. Um, we did uh, list as socioeconomic status as one of the um, indicators um, to consider uh, when, when thinking about our students and the diversity amongst our students. As for um, your point around kindness, we did bring that feedback to the steering committee. And uh, there was an overwhelming support for maintaining it as its own commitment. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Um, oh, Ian, go ahead.
Thanks and good evening. Um, I, I'm just struck and I'm reminded of the report that was compiled and presented October 9th and it was the overview of uh, the Listening Tour themes. And it was really the, the engagement that we sought from the community. Um, really did call out eight items. Um, and one of them was in fact um, listed as community connection. And, and I think that's where we've latched on with uh, the kindness piece as a steering committee uh, to, I guess, feed back what we heard from community, um, while incorporating um, as we've all articulated, the need for kindness. We, we believe it's integrated into our work. Um, and assume it is there, but uh, making a point and calling it out will provide that additional focus. So um, just reflecting and want to uh, remind folks that we are responding in fact to some of the engagement that we heard from our community as well. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Ian. Um, I will go to Donna and then Robbie.
Sorry, I already spoke. Preston wasn't allowing me to put uh, my hand up there, so I had put my hand up on this platform. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, a, a few thoughts and a few different topics that have been raised so far. Um, first off, on the question of uh, equitable outcomes and equitable opportunity. Um, the, I, I don't see the need for clarification there. It, it should be apparent that we want equity by improving lower scores, not by lowering higher scores. Um, the, but, but to be abundantly clear, um, uh, to Shinii's point that we cannot have equality of outcome, we can. If we do not have equality of outcome between groups, we do not have equality of opportunity. You cannot have equality of outcome between individuals. You never leave a system where every student gets an 85 and that's the same across the board. But if you don't have equality of outcome between groups, you don't have equality of opportunity. Um, the uh, the question he raises about the measurability of um, advancing knowledge around um, measurability isn't even the right word and, and it makes us think quantitative and we don't have to think quantitative. We can think qualitative. Uh, but I don't see anything in our indicators that speaks to um, the second bullet he raised. "Advanced Student and Staff Education and Indigenous Rights, Truths, Responsibilities and Reconciliation." Um, and we do need to be able to report back on how we have done that. Um, and so that's something that, that we should probably take away. Um, to the question about kindness, to me, there is a big difference between saying, this is a value that all of our teachers carry and, and it will be there and we're gonna center this and we are gonna focus on this. Um, and uh, my kids go to a school where that is the message. Kindness is, is first foremost centered core messaging. Um, and it, the first two months I was there, I was kinda like, this is kinda creepy. And then it grew on me and suddenly this, this message started to sink in and resonate and I understood the culture that the school was building and I think it's a culture that the board can build. Um, does it appear as a commitment or as a, a central value? When I started to talk about, you know, what, what are the outcomes, what are the, what are the measurables? It did look like a bunch of those things popped up in other places. And so I was shifting toward that. Maybe it lives as a central value, um, the, the central value rather than having six of them that is elevated in some kind of way. Um, but I'm, when, when we had that conversation at steering committee, staff's perspective was it is much more effective to elevate it at the commitment uh, level than, than to try and find some kind of value um, and, and still keep that in, in core. So back to Donna's point, um, do I think it's perfect? Now I'd probably mean another way. Do I think that this will do the job of elevating it? Yes. I am out of time. I might have more to say, but I'll pass for now.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Next on the list, Navid.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So, yeah, I think um, Tanya has a point. I understand where she's coming from and uh, I can see that. But the thing is, I like the way it's putting point number two, empower staff to lead, innovate and connect within a supportive environment. So that says a lot to me. And also, number one, it ties up with the Ed Act. When we say strengthen relationships among students, parents or guardians, staff and the broader community to support positive engagement. Uh, to me, that is absolutely important. Uh, as far as way, how can we measure kindness? Uh, in, under well-being, point number one, we have foster an environment where everyone feels safe. So we are talking about like how feelings can be measured. So why do we have this then? Why don't we have foster environment where everyone is safe? And to the best of my knowledge, everyone has been safe at HDSB. Uh, only claims of feeling unsafe, otherwise everybody is safe, right? So yeah, feelings, when we are accounting for feelings, uh, we have to account for kindness also. Uh, it ties up with our responsibilities as a board, as trustees, I think, to strengthen the relationship between all the stakeholders. And also empower the staff to lead. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Gina?
And there, there's been lots of conversation about the, the measures around this and so how we get it, this is through our, have your say, survey data. And uh, whatever it, it looks like in its final version, the multi-year plan will be adjusting that, uh, the questions. So some might already relate directly to kindness, but certainly if it lives as its own commitment, we would be committed to, to altering, you know, that survey data so that we can have some measures that are directly linked. so that we can have some measures that are directly linked.
All right, Tanya?
Yeah, so... I think if the majority of trustees want to keep it, I need to see this section bulked up. Because to me, that's being said elsewhere. Because even key objective number two, empower staff to lead, innovate and connect. I can see that in learning, engagement and achievement. We're empowering staff and whatnot. So to me, if you want to keep it and that's the will of the majority, then it needs to be bulked up. Because to me, it's very, very weak. I'll move on to another commitment now. So the commitment, human rights, equity and inclusion. The second objective is reduce gaps in achievement and opportunity. How is this different than what is being said in learning, engagement and achievement? So if we're looking at reducing gaps in achievement, I think that again, there's overlap in what's being said in both the commitments. How are they going to be measured differently? So I guess one of my concerns is, is someone going to do a deep dive in the wording that's being used and in the objectives to make sure that we're not repeating the same things twice, three times? So I just find that there's a lot of repetition. And I'm not understanding what the difference is between some of the key objectives. So if someone can look at key objective number two in equity inclusion versus what's being said in learning, engagement and achievement. Then I also have a concern with well-being. We talk about, you know, key objective. Key objectives is foster an environment where everyone feels safe, valued and included. And key objective number two is promoting, promote and support the mental well-being of students and staff. So where I'm missing here is the key objective of what about physical well-being? We talk a lot about mental health being, but there's also, there should be some importance put on physical well-being. Encouraging our students to be physically active, participating in an activity after school or joining a club or being part of a group, which goes back to, if we want, community connection and blah, blah, blah. So I guess what I'm saying for the well-being commitment, I would love to see some sort of objective that measures physical well-being, not just mental well-being.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. So to your point, well-being is defined as it includes academically, physically, socially and emotionally. I hear your point around specifically listing that as an objective around the physical health aspect. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. And for my own clarity, can you please share with me where you see the duplication of objectives wherein human rights, equity and inclusion, objective two is reduce gaps in achievement and opportunity? How does that conflict or collude with what you've identified under learning, engagement and achievement?
Yes, so duplication in the sense that your objective is the same. Not word per word, copy paste, but the objective is the same. So in human rights, equity and inclusion, number two says reduce gaps in achievement and opportunity. And then when I look at learning, engagement and achievement, it says, first objective, ensure every student reaches their potential in their unique learning journey. So if you're ensuring that each student reaches their potential, then you're also reducing the gaps in achievement. Like they kind of work hand in hand. Key objective number two, provide staff with necessary support for student success. Again, that speaks to objective number two, which is reducing gaps in achievement and opportunity. So to me, we're kind of saying the same thing, but in using different words. So whereas the commitment on learning, engagement and achievement, it's all about helping students reach their potential, taking away barriers, providing them with support systems, doing everything we can to ensure a student reaches their best self. And when I look at human rights, equity and inclusion, it's reduce gaps in achievement and opportunity. So we're doing that. That will be accomplished through learning, engagement and achievement. So I hope that clarifies what I was trying to say.
Okay, thank you. And certainly we can take that feedback back to the steering committee because that's the point of this discussion. But is there somebody on the steering committee who would like to speak to this? Robbie and Allison has her hand up. We'll go with Allison. Allison, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Just making sure everybody can hear me.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I just wanted to bring the lens of staff through this point that in the human rights and equity commitment. You'll notice that the objective does not speak specifically to students or staff because there is also a component here for career barriers and opportunities in ensuring that we're able to bring equity competencies and improve our representation amongst the staff that serve the schools and the communities as well. So that is an element that could be looked at as not captured quite as well in the learning and achievement as well.
Thank you, Allison. Robbie?
Thank you. I don't see, from my perspective, I don't see an issue with having commitments that mingle. And in fact, that was one of the criticisms of the previous plan was that we treated them all as pillars. And to me, it's reasonable that a positive outcome in one area is interrelated with a positive outcome in another area. I actually see it quite differently. I see that individual focus in learning and achievement being separate from the group level analysis and focus and asking, are we supporting students who are disadvantaged in some way, shape and form? Are we closing those gaps? Because if we take everyone's potential as given, given all of their limitations from the circumstances they're in, we could try and push everyone to their potential. But we're actually asking about how do we reshape what student's potential is? How do we look at the barriers that are in their way and remove those systemic barriers? So I see them as quite different things. And to that point, I think the point Carol raised earlier is extremely valid. And there's one place in specifically in graduation rates. And it's something, I don't know how we come across this. It's only talked about in graduation rates and in reducing disparities. I think we want to see those reduced disparities in other areas. But that it specifically names Indigenous, racialized and/or with special education needs and it doesn't say anything about socioeconomic status. And that's actually, we have really good data that socioeconomic status is a major barrier to success and one that we need to be taking active look at. So I think it belongs in there. And I think I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much, Robbie. Are there any other questions or comments about any of the other aspects of the multi-year strategic plan? Okay, Charlie?
Thank you. I'm not sure if this was said before, but I do feel that there was an overlap between key point one in well-being and if I remember correctly, the key point one in kindness, community and connection. Because I'm reading well-being right now. It says foster an environment where everyone feels safe, valued and included. And kindness, community and connections, key point one says strengthen relationships among students, parents, guardians, staff and the broader community to support positive engagement. And I feel that environment where everyone feels included is an environment that fosters positive engagement.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Charlie. We'll bring that back to the committee. Carol?
Thank you. Just following up on what Robbie was mentioning. In the human rights and equity and inclusion section, key objective one refers to honoring diverse identities. Is, what are those identities? Does the board have specific identities in mind? And is socioeconomic status included in that? I'm just wondering if we've, are we actually, I mean, I had asked the question and now Robbie has, I guess, agreed and found it in the quantitative measures, which is great. But is it included and is that considered a diverse identity or are we looking at something else? I guess some specificity would help. I think that was one of Tanya's comments is that, again, I'm not on the steering committee, so I haven't been part of the in-depth discussions that produce this. But I did participate in August, so I do understand the feelings behind a lot of what's here. I'm just, I would agree with Tanya that I think we need to really understand the language before we commit to it. Because like I said, the expectation from the board will be that staff will report on the things that are in here, that staff will be able to show barriers to progress or successes in progress. And also when we get to budgeting, looking at how we're budgeting to achieve these things. So if we don't fully understand what it is we're asking for from staff, I feel like we're not being fair. So again, I'm just wondering about the diverse identities, if it includes anything to do with the disproportionality that we do know exists depending on material resources that students have. Thank you.
Robbie would like to respond to that.
In my read, I don't see it speaking to that. Most of us don't identify as rich or poor. We hold other things as components of our identity. So for me, key objective one isn't about that. Key objective two is about that. And that's the way I read it, but it could be read differently.
Go ahead, Carol.
Thank you. I would agree. And I'm just wondering, because number one ends with equitable access. And that's, I think, one of the things that I'm hearing in schools is continuous concerns about equitable access to the resources that students need in terms of technology and various other things, tutoring. And I'm concerned that if we're not really clear in our strategic plan, then we won't be addressing it in the way that we'd like to.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point. We'll take that back as well. Margot?
Thanks, Joanna. I just want to come back to what Charlie said. I think it's really important that when we're looking at the similarity in the key objectives by having some that are so similar, as Charlie pointed out, we're really watering things down and not having that specific focus. So we want to make sure, again, coming back to the kindness piece, I think kindness is super important. I've always felt that way. People know that. But I think that by having such a similar key objective between kindness and well-being, how are we differentiating between the two? And how are we ensuring that we have that clear laser focus to ensure that that's being identified? I think it's, again, I really appreciate Charlie's words. So thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Margot. Okay, Tanya?
Yeah, further to what Margot just said about watering things down, I want to point out that there's one commitment that no one has had an issue with. There's been no issues and that's environmental and global citizenship. It's written in a way that is very clear. Anyone who's reading it clearly understands what this commitment is about. We're not seeing overlap between the other commitments. So I guess I would have expected all the commitments to be written in the same way that the environmental commitment was written. You know, it speaks to specific skills. It speaks to the SDG goals, the UN's SDG goals. It's very clear. And not one of us here tonight has had an issue with this all. And I think if we're going to put, and these are all things that are very measurable. And I think if we're going to approve a multi-year strategic plan, we need to have more clarity in all the commitments like we do with the environmental goal. I think it would really be worth dissecting all of these things to ensure that there isn't repetition. And we're not saying the same thing, but in different words throughout the different goals. And I think it goes back to, you know, maybe let's not have six commitments. Let's bring it back to five and incorporate some of the stuff that's in kindness. And what's the rest of it? Kindness, connection and community. Let's incorporate those two objectives somewhere in, somewhere else. So I just wanted to point that out. And I think, you know, there's been four trustees on the steering committee. So I think the four trustees have done good work. And you've been in this for so long that when the rest of us are coming at it and looking at it and trying to understand it, we're not seeing it with the same lens you are. We're trying to, at least I am. I'm trying to read this with a fresh lens. I'm like brand new, pretend I don't know anything. Does this make sense to me? Will this make sense to the public? Can this be measured? And to me, like this needs some tweaking. So I would hope that, you know, maybe the committee can meet again or maybe all eleven of us can meet again to maybe hash out some of the items that are of concern.
Thank you, Tanya. And certainly the plan is that the steering committee will be meeting after, well, after tonight's meeting, taking into consideration all the feedback that's been received. So this will be all considered again and discussed. And there was a number of points made that I think, you know, the committee will be able to take under advisement and work with. Are there any other final comments? Carol?
All right, just one quick last point. I wonder if mapping the quantitative and qualitative measures on the last page into the commitments themselves might help. Rather than having it on the, sorry, I have it as one of the pages. But rather than having a list and trying to figure out which of these would help us to understand the intention of the commitments and then how they will be measured and budgeted, could they perhaps be mapped into each of them? Maybe that would help a little bit. Thank you.
And thank you, Carol. We certainly had that discussion. We actually started out with the measures being appended to each commitment and decided to put them at the end. I can't remember what the, Carolina, did you want to? Yeah, Carolina?
So from what I recall from those discussions and other committee members could also weigh in, is that really you're measuring... um, really you're measuring the success of the, uh, multi-year strategic plan as a whole. Not, um, like, if you're determining success is the success of the whole multi-year strategic plan. So, um, that's why they're all in the back. Additional measures could also be added as time goes by, as we get different data sources and things like that. So it's definitely not, um, that, it's a living list. Um, and I had another point and now it escapes me. Um, but yeah, that was the general intent. Heather, do you want to add something to that? I think you remember the part that I'm missing.
I think I might. Um, and also it was in an effort to align with the ministry indicators. Um, so as we were going through the ministry indicators and determining, um, which went with each commitment or area of focus, there was a lot of overlap. Um, so to Carolina's point, um, it made more sense to have the metrics be in evaluation of the plan as a whole, um, and success of that plan as a whole, rather than each individual commitment.
Yeah, thank you. That was identified as the important part of it, um, is to measure the overall, um, plan as opposed to focus on any one aspect of it. Charlie and then Amy.
Thank you. I'm looking at the well-being commitment and I'm seeing a lot of, sort of, mental undertones within it. Um, it says that, uh, key objective two says it supports the well, men, the well, mental well-being of students and staff. And even though, in the what it means category says that we nurture safe and supportive spaces where everyone can flourish academically, physically, socially and emotionally. I feel like there's a lot of sort of mental health or non-physical undertones within it. And I'm wondering if there's any reason why we can't sort of add mental health to the name of the category and just name it mental health and well-being.
Yeah, that was, uh, also concerned. I can't remember why we just, I think we were looking for more, um, summative terminology for the commitment, something more brief and direct. Um, but that can certainly be revisited. Did you want to speak to that, Tina?
Yeah, I think it was, we had mental health and well-being before, and I think we were trying to make, um, make it a shorter title. Um, but we also heard earlier this evening, uh, from Tanya about adding a component around physical well-being, um, in there to, to balance it out. Um, so that's what I recall.
So something else to, for the steering committee to, um, discuss. Okay, Amy.
Hi, thanks. Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, reflect on the fact that our multi-year plan has to, um, fit neatly into the legislative requirements. And I'm glad that that was raised just a few minutes ago because some of our commitments are based on not just our previous multi-year plan, but also on what the ministry has, um, put forward as being required in a multi-year plan. And, uh, so while you, you would see some overlap, that's partially intentional because of the ministry requirements, but it's also because a plan should knit together all of the various commitments or priorities, however you want to label them, um, to create a whole plan. And I believe that was also one of the reasons why the measures were put at the back, um, was more around, um, the public doesn't probably have the same inside information about those measures as the people that are doing the work. And, and so the measures aren't perhaps as important to the public, but by putting them at the back, it's still all there, but it's put in a place where the, the public's not left wondering how this measure works, how that measure works, um, and, and perhaps creating confusion. Uh, we wanted the, the commitments and the objectives to stand alone so that that could be the focus. I remember that being part of the conversation. Thanks.
Thank you. Amy and Jean, over to you.
Yes, thank you very much. Back to that last page, and I'm so happy to hear just a minute ago that more indices or measures can be added. Uh, because as I look at this page, so much of what happens in our school board is directly reflected or goes back to our staff and, and how well they are doing. And, uh, in one of the, um, objectives or commitments on mental health, we talk about staffing here and yet don't really see staff reflected in this, other than in this student and staff disproportionality indices. So, um, I thought there might be for staff, uh, maybe recruitment and retention of staff, particularly retention as it comes to mental health and being able to keep staff in. So I don't know if that's something that would be added later or it's a missing part, but it's just, it just struck me that I didn't see a lot and yet, you know, um, what is it? Um, Salco says, uh, it, it's strength is its people. And, and, and our board, certainly our staff, is so very, very important to the outcomes that our children will, um, be able to, uh, achieve. So just a little bit more, uh, but again, hearing that more indices can be added, that's super. Thank you.
All right, um, next on the list, Tanya.
Something to what Charlie said earlier, and I think Tina said earlier. We, we have a current commitment called mental health and well-being, and the goal was, oh, let's make it shorter. So we called it well-being. But then with all the other commitments, we added words to it. So equi- today's equity inclusion became human rights equity and inclusionment. Uh, today's learning and achievement became learning, engagement and achievement. Not sure what the difference is. Um, I completely understand environmental leadership, why it was changed because, um, again, that was the only commitment I didn't have a problem with. Um, so I'm wondering, is the goal to, what was the thinking? Is the thinking to include more words to say we do more? Or again, are we just watering words, watering the title down to, like, I, I'm just confused. So some we reduced them and some we made them longer. So, um, it would be nice to understand the logic there. Um, and back to the one that we made longer. So today we have equity inclusion and we're proposing human rights equity and inclusion. So I'm wondering, what was the thought process behind adding the word human rights? Because, um, yes, we're, we're bound to the ed act and everything that it tells us that we need to do, but we're also bound by the Charter of Rights and Freedoms, human rights and whatnot. So it's law. So why, why, um, why include it in the name of the commitment? What was the, the thought process there? If it's law, it's, it's mandated, we have to do it. Why include it in the name of the commitment?
Yeah, I think since the last multi-year plan was created and we named it, we've, we've really looked at, um, changing the name of the department as well with a greater focus on human rights. And so I think we were trying to align, um, the work of the department, the name the department has. Um, we, since I think the, our Human Rights and Equity Advisor has come on board, I think at the start of the last, um, plan. So I think it's just to encompass all of the work that, um, both his office and, um, the, um, Superintendent Petkow's, uh, off the department does.
So can I follow up on a que- so I understand that logic. So then, maybe going back to Carol's question about budgeting, are we now creating a department that looks after kindness, community and connection? Because right now we do have, sort of, people who look after these different areas. Are we, is the thought then to rename some of the departments to align with the commitments or is that, was that, was that given any thought or is that still TBD?
Yeah, we haven't had a conversation about creating a department of kindness. I think that would be something that would be, um, in my opinion, it's already happening grassroots in the school, and I think that's an important piece of this commitment and the conversations that we've had. Um, having been in education for a long time as a teacher, as a principal, you know, supervising schools, as a superintendent, I can tell you that a lot of energy and time is spent around building community, building connection, kindness, um, building those values. Because quite frankly, you can't get to some of the other things we have in our plan unless you do that. So to me, this one seems more bottom up to me than top down in terms of having a, a department. And I think all the departments would support the work, but it really is grassroots work. And having it in the plan validates the work that our staff are doing and really prioritizing because they can't get on with the rest of it if they don't build that. So I, I see it that way. So not a separate department, but really validating the work of the schools and using our existing departments to support that work. And, and our family of school superintendents and structures that we have.
Okay, thank you, Tina. Uh, next on the list, Robbie.
Were you? I was listening so well, I forgot what I was going to say. I will come back if it, if it arises.
All right, uh, Charlie.
Thank you. I would like to speak a bit on what Tanya was talking about, on how sometimes we're increasing the word length and, and how in well-being we've decreased it. And I think that the absence of mental health would affect a lot of the work that we've done in mental health in our schools because a lot of schools are implementing like growth spaces, I mean, uh, relaxation techniques or spaces to just de-stress and deal with the events of the day. And I think all of that was branded under the title of mental health. And if any schools or students are seeing that mental health is now gone in our new multi-year plan, then they'll think that we've done enough, which in my opinion, we have not. There are a lot, still a lot of students that are still struggling with mental health. And in my opinion, keeping it there would make everyone know that we still have some work to do in that aspect.
Thank you, Charlie. Um, great points. So if we were to change it to mental health and well-being, uh, would everybody be satisfied that the well-being part would encompass physical health, emotional? All right. Thank you very much. We'll take that back to the committee. And Robbie on the list.
Now I remember. Um, so sitting at the table, but process-wise, and Tanya's kind of raised this point of what, what next? Um, and, and the committee meets tomorrow. Um, and the current schedule is for it to come back to board for vote, uh, in November. The, what I'm hearing around the table is varied opinions. Some that sound like they're in Donna's camp of, um, is it exactly as I would have written it? No. Am I, do, can I live with it? Can I support it? Yes. And some that are in Tanya's camp of, um, eeh, there's stuff in here I don't like. Uh, I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but, uh, it, less, less in Donna's camp. Um, and, and that's, that's a space that says, um, does this need more work to get to the point where all of us can say we can live with it, we can support it. Um, and, and so certainly it'll go to committee and it'll come back out. Uh, and, and I guess at that point, we need, we need some mechanism, and I'll look to the, the chair and vice chair on this, on, um, how we take a temperature check of, yeah, it's ready to come for a vote or no, actually this probably isn't ready to come for a vote. And, and I'm just not sure how we get that temperature check.
Okay, so I, I trust that those who have, uh, who've shared their comments have them written in a format that can be shared with the steering committee, um, so that we can bring it for discussion tomorrow. And then once that's, um, once all that's considered, uh, maybe the committee can think of a process to come back to trustees for a final, um, kind of a check-in. And I see that Amy and Curtis have their hands up. So I'll, um, go over to Amy and then Curtis, please.
Yeah, um, as always, when we have work that has to come before the board, we do try to share things as early as possible. Sometimes it's not as early as we'd like, but i- in this case, it's work that's been underway for, uh, a few months now. So I, I think we would definitely try to get this in trustees' hands before the end of this month. Um, if, if not even like next week. Um, obviously, we, we would like to have support for trustees around the table. And I, I, I've listened very carefully to some of the suggestions made this evening, and I'm more than willing to support making some changes in order to ensure that the, the plan is understood and implementable. Um, so I, I think, yeah, we would definitely be bringing something back so that trustees could see it before it comes to board. Um, and then if trustees so chose to defer it at board, um, it would, it would go back to the committee again for more work. I'm, I'm hopeful that we can take back the messages we've received this evening and, and come back with something better.
Thanks, Amy. And Curtis?
Uh, thank you so much, Joanna. Uh, yeah, we, the, all trustees, uh, should know that we do take, um, very careful and give careful consideration to all the points that we have heard, um, over the last few months. Um, we've, we've made major tweaks. Some suggestions we accept, some we believe that it is important to maintain, um, what we already have. Uh, and so I think it's, um, it's important that, uh, you know, we have a, a spirit of, uh, we're working together, uh, knowing that we might not always agree a hundred percent on the direction. Uh, but as, uh, Dan, as Donna said earlier on, it is, you know, we all come to a place where we're not all going to agree, but we can all, um, support the plan. I, I am trusting and hoping that when we bring the plan back after careful consideration of everything we've heard tonight, that we can get, um, full and unanimous support.
Thank you, Curtis. I have, uh, two more speakers on the list. Robbie, you're done? And Tanya?
Um, yeah, so to what you said earlier, you hope people who have comments have them in writing? Um, no, my comments are not in writing. I do have a lot of chicken scratch that is not legible by anyone but me. But I mean, this was recorded, so you, you can see the tape. Um, my only concern is tomorrow, the steering committee is going to meet. They're going to listen to some stuff, ignore other stuff, and then they're going to come back in November at board and expect a decision. When we're at board, we are limited to how many times we can speak and for how long we can speak. This is a very important document. It's one of those things in the ed act that we are responsible for. It's not something we should take lightly. Um, and this is the first time in how many months that we've actually been able to sit down and have a discussion. And I think everyone has some good information to share that, you know, we talked about budget. We talked about how do we, different ways of measuring kindness. We talked about the, the names of the different commitments. So there are a lot of moving parts, and I would hate for us to rush something that's crucial to our role. It's crucial to the strategy of the board. Um, and I know to Amy's point, she says, yes, we can defer it, but is there an opportunity to bring this back again to committee of the whole? Or have a planning meet, like, just a NYPD meeting and really hash this out so that everyone is comfortable with the, the product before it goes to board? So I, I just want us to think, like, this is one of our major responsibilities. I don't want us to take this lightly. And this is our first time as a group to really sit down and discuss it. And I think- And I think, you know, other people might want to say things but are not because we're on camera. So I would, I would just want that opportunity to create that space to have further discussion, walk through it and understand where staff is coming from, how things can be measured and whatnot. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. So I, I think we all agree that this is one of the most important, um, aspects of our role as trustees is to set the strategic direction for the school board. Just to clarify something, uh, this is not the first time we're meeting or have been given the opportunity to provide feedback. This is a third draft. And there was a number of focused, uh, meetings and sessions for trustees and senior staff to meet and discuss this, including a session, um, in, was it August? When we talked about the five commitments, sorry, the six commitments, the six being kindness, uh, community and connection as, as being its own, um, commitment. And since then, trustees have seen two previous drafts and have had opportunity to provide feedback. And I don't believe we received any comments in advance of this meeting. So this is not the first time you're seeing it. It's not the first time you had an opportunity to provide feedback, just to be clear. But certainly all the feedback that was shared tonight will be shared with the steering committee at tomorrow's meeting. Will be taken into consideration because we have taken every feedback seriously up until now and we will continue to do so. And so we will, um, have those discussions and see where that takes us. But I think to Amy's point, there will be an opportunity to share with you what the outcome of that discussion is and, um, any changes that have been made so that you can again, um, have a look and, uh, comment on that in advance of the, um, report and the, the multi-year strategic plan coming for approval. Okay. All right, uh, Tanya, are you? Sorry, you already spoke. Okay, Carol.
Thank you. I was just looking and I finally found what I was thinking of. So in September, we were sent, um, what was titled NYPD Draft Two. And that was what we used as the basis to make our comments in a shared document. I'm not sure. I know that I made comments and I believe Tanya did, and I don't know if anyone else did. But what I noted about that draft is it included for each of the commitments, it had objectives, but it also had how we will measure our progress. And so I think that's what I was looking for when I got this version and it seems to have a lot less in it. So I was just trying to clarify where I was coming from. Um, and earlier I might have misunderstood, but I, was it said that we won't be evaluating the individual commitments as trustees to determine how our progress? But we will be evaluating the NYPD as a whole? I don't think that's quite true and I, this might be that I misunderstood what it meant. I believe we will be evaluating our progress on each of the commitments in terms of achieving the objectives that have been set out. And that's why I was thinking, um, and I know that Manager Khan has created some great report templates to help us do that. And Director Ennis is very much engaged in moving us in the direction of better data presentation. But that was where I was coming from in terms of how will we measure our progress? I found was a really useful part of NYPD Draft Version Two that we got in September. So I don't know if it's possible to produce draft, however many it would be, three? Maybe this is three and then that would be four. Uh, but yeah, I found that very helpful because it, it, I think what it does is it helps trustees to understand how staff are seeing the NYPD and how it's being interpreted in advance. So that as Tanya has mentioned, it is an extremely important task that we have to set out our NYPD. So we need to really understand it and make sure that we understand it the same way that staff do to prevent any, any issues, um, down the road and to be as fair as possible to everyone who's involved with reporting on it. So I would be very much in favor of Tanya's suggestion of bringing this back to some sort of a committee environment in, I guess it would be November now, and then look at, and maybe the adoption phase a little bit later on. Because again, I don't think it's worth rushing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Carolina, did you want to respond?
Uh, yes, it's just a point of clarification. Thanks, Carol. Um, uh, the intent is not that there will be just one measurements block for the whole plan. When trustees receive their monitoring reports, it, it would be by commitment and then, uh, measurements underneath, underneath each of the commitments. The way it's presented is for public consumption and so the measures are all wrapped up together, um, to make it clearer for the public to be able to digest how we would, um, as a board, evaluate the success of the plan as a whole. But for trustees' monitoring purposes, it would be broken up into commitments. And then with how we will measure our success, how will we know underneath each of those commitments? So, so you are correct in, in your assumption to say, I thought that we were going to have measures underneath each, each one. That hasn't, uh, gone away. It's just packaged into all together for the purposes of presenting it publicly.
So I'm not quite clear on why there's two different versions, why there's public consumption versus trustee consumption. I understand that there's operational plans and that would be very separate. But in terms of, um, what we see as trustees, I, I think it needs to be the same as what the public sees in order for the public to then evaluate us as trustees in whether or not we're adequately doing our job of monitoring.
I think, um, as a committee, it's probably worth taking that back to see how it could be, uh, addressed in a way that's sort of transparent on both sides.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair. So what I'm hearing is you'd like to see the met included under each commitment as opposed to at the end? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. And can I just have, um, a show of hands of how many would prefer that? As opposed to what we have right now, which is, um, a listing of the, uh, measures at the end? Seems like, uh, uh, Amy, you're in favor of seeing, or did you want to speak to it?
I, I can speak to it. Um, it, it wasn't my idea to put them at the end. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay. So we'll bring that back to the committee. Oh, Jean. All right, Jean, over to you.
Yeah, just in listening to what, uh, Tanya has had to say that, that tonight, that the notion that maybe some people have other ID, items or ideas they might like to add, but haven't done so yet. And knowing that the committee is meeting tomorrow, uh, who would they send? Who's the best person to send their ideas to tonight?
Um, you can send them to me. Okay, thank you. All right. Any other final feedback comments, uh, on the multi-year plan? Your strategic plan? Tanya?
Um, just to Carol's point, um, I think knowing how things will be measured are very important. And I think that could add clarity to what's happening. Do I necessarily need to see it on the plan? You know, the item we give to the public? I don't know if I need to see it because a lot of them, a lot, like, many people in the public won't know what all of these measurements are. But what I'd like to be able to do as a trustee is when you say your key objective is strengthen relationships among students, parents, guardians, staff and the broader community to support positive engagement, I'd like to be able to turn to the director and say, and how will that be measured? And if you can tell me how that will be measured, I'm okay with that. And maybe I'll put it in my little chicken scratch notes on the side, uh, to ensure it's being measured. So, um, I think verbally, I need to know how it's being measured because it is a strategic plan. But do I need it on the sheet that gets shared with the public? Ah, maybe, maybe not. But I, we do have to go back to the public to see if they're okay with this. Is that not true? So maybe that's a question we can ask the public. Do you want to see how things are being measured? I don't know. But again, that could be a discussion we have at another meeting. Thank you.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is, um, trustees would like to see the outcome measures, um, sorry, the measures to measure whether the objectives are being attained, um, listed for each commitment. And there's, um, opportunity for perhaps, um, as far as the layout of the plan goes, uh, what's being shared with public and what's being shared internally for a couple of different options. One that would be more detailed, that would actually include the measures and another that would just be high level, listing the commitments. And people will have an opportunity to choose which one of the two they want to, um, have a look at. Okay. Thank you. Um, Kelly?
Uh, thank you. So we're talking about measures. Is that not the operational plan? Like, I mean, I'm getting confused here because the measures are what are being put in place, um, which is in my mind, the operational plan, which is where the measures would be put down so that things can be tracked. And trustees are not responsible for the operational plan. That is what's in the hands of staff. So that's part of why it was divided off so that we only had the multi-year plan and the operational plan is a separate document, which would be then created once the multi-year plan is approved. Is that not correct?
Thank you, Kelly. Yes, that, that is an important distinction. Um, the measures is certainly not a, a required part of the multi-year strategic plan. Obviously, the commitments and the objectives are because that sets the strategic direction. The measures is really how are we going to measure that we were successful in meeting these objectives? But that's not part of the strategic part of it. Part of the reason why, uh, the measures were put in the back were sort of as an aid, sort of, um, to Tanya's point of, how are you going to measure that you're doing X, Y, Z? This is an example of the measurements that we would use. However, as we get more data sets, more sources, we may be able to provide more information on how we're going to do that. But really that measures piece is not a required piece of a strategic plan. It's there for, for assistance and understanding how we're going to gauge our success. But it's not a required piece and that would be something that would come after the plan is passed. We determine the actions to put those things into play and then, uh, also further delineate how we're going to measure the success of those actions. So that's a, that's an important distinction. Thank you, Kelly.
Um, can I follow up? So therefore, those measures cannot be created until the actual multi-year plan has been approved. So that the, because the measures need to be developed after the multi-year plan has been approved with all of its components. So therefore, we can't really get those measures until the multi-year plan has been approved. The ones that you, that are in the, are just indicators and they're not necessarily the ones that will be there after the plan has been approved. They're only temporary placeholders at this moment. Because I know that some of the, um, areas have gone out to different departments for them to start creating. But if areas get changed or whatever, they may have to change the indicators that, or the measures that they're going to be using. Is that not correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. Um, and really the measures are offered as, um, as a reference point. Uh, mind you, staff have looked at the measures and are comfortable that those would be, uh, the measures that we would use by and large, uh, to gauge our success in various different areas. Um, but there's nothing saying that additional ones that are not there are not going to be used in future or developed to be able to gauge our success. If there are, um, commitments that we haven't had previously and are now going to have and will develop, uh, ways in which we can measure those things in future if it's a, a commitment that's identified in the strategic plan.
Okay. So I just want to be clear, the multi-year plan and the measures are separate. We would be approving the multi-year plan, not the measures. So therefore, this multi-year plan is not contingent on what measures are there. Thank you.
That's correct, Kelly. Thank you. Okay, uh, Carol?
That helps a lot. Thank you, Kelly. So I think maybe what was happening is I was using the, how we will measure our progress to understand what the objectives were. Because again, not being on the steering committee, I wasn't there for the discussions. So when I read the version two, um, I looked at the perceptual data and the incident data that was to be used to measure progress. And that was one way that I started to question having two separate commitments around well-being and kindness. Because in the kindness area, the only data that was, um, suggested that would be used to measure progress is improvements within Austrian culture of kindness will be demonstrated or measured by reductions in respectful and violent workplace reports. So that speaks to safety and that comes under well-being. So to Navid's point, um, fostering an environment where everyone feels safe and also is safe, that measurement, the way I would be able to evaluate the success of this, that objective under the commitment of well-being is actually in this version appearing under the kindness area. So I'm starting to connect a couple of the conversations that we've had and, and that's, so I understand and I agree that having the measurements, included so the public can evaluate them maybe is not as necessary. But it, I still think that it is helpful for us as trustees, again, to understand what the intention is so that we don't get down the road and realize that maybe as Tanya's pointed out, the language is not clear or that what we intended is different from what staff understood or what the steering committee intended and understood versus those of us who, who are not on the committee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. So given what's been said, um, is it all right then to leave the measures at the end and not list them specifically under each commitment? Okay. Knowing that new measures, um, will come, may come out, will come out. Um, to your point, Carol, about, um, measuring kindness, Tina did say that there will be an opportunity to add more specific tailored, tailored questions to that commitment in the Have Your Say, um, surveys that students complete. And that's just one example of how, how those measures will, um, continue to evolve. Okay. Thank you. That's great. Um, great discussion. And I think, um, everybody had a chance, opportunity to speak. So we're okay to move on? All right. Let's move on to, um, item four point two, which is policies and governance procedures. And there you have two items, uh, both of which had already come to a previous committee of the whole and I believe were shared at the last board meeting. And, uh, there were some more, um, recommendations made. And so both of these items are now, uh, in front of you. Uh, Robbie, would you like to take us through, uh, the final changes?
Thank you. Um, the policy is, uh, very lightly amended and I believe this is consistent with the last time the policy came before board. The, the governance procedure has seen significant, uh, revisions since its last, uh, trip to board with a lot of help from, uh, uh, I want to lift up Tanya in particular for, for, um, providing useful direction on this. You will see in two point two, um, two point three is no longer there. Uh, it had been proposed as a, as a specific item of direction and consultation about, um, consultations with equity seeking groups or other language and we could not settle on what that language was. Uh, and two point two has now, um, simply pointed out, pardon me along the way. Two weeks in, still coughing. Um, pointed out along the way that, uh, this is Pointed out along the way that this is more in the administrative end of things. And how the consultation is conducted is really the director's job. The point is that consultation must happen, and so that's been added into 2.2. Since the last time this came to board, much more work has been done on section eight and nine in the way that those have been split out. And you, I'm not going to go over the whole thing. Hopefully, you've had the chance to take a look at it. This is hopefully a little bit clearer on how things flow. And the big change is that the requests are no longer coming to the director. They are coming to the chair and vice chair. And they are making either an initial determination or submitting to trustees for a request of, yeah, we have to take a look at this. So that's the major change to process that's been proposed here.
Thank you very much, Robbie. Are there any questions or comments for the committee? Carol? Tanya?
I'll start with the policy. I know changes haven't been made, but these are, this is, there are two words that are used in the board policy that bring me, have caused concern because I don't know the definition. I don't know what the intent is behind it. So in the policy, under guiding principles, item 2.1B, that's proposed school names must be distinct from other HDSB and neighboring board school names. What is the definition of distinct? And what is the definition of neighboring? And the reason I bring this up is because when we went to name the last school, we were presented with names that maybe are distinct to some, maybe are not distinct to some, and a name that is included in a, I would say, neighboring school board. So it goes back to, what do you define as neighboring? What do I define as neighboring? So what does distinct mean? And what does neighboring mean? And maybe we can add some clarification around those two words. So for example, when we went to name the last school, a few names were proposed. One of them was, one of the proposed names was Harmony Grove. We already have a school called Pine Grove. So you would wonder, oh, is that distinct enough? So where's the distinction? We were also proposed with the name Mary Shad Public School. But I know that there's a Mary Shad at the TDSB. So to me, TDSB is pretty close. So I guess to me, I'm looking for clarification on what those two words mean.
Absolutely valid points. There were questions that were not immediately clear. I, I think it would be fairly easy to define neighboring if we wanted to. I think it is much harder to draw a solid line around what distinct is. That's, I mean, as it sits right now, that is to the judgment of the trustees around the table when it comes to the table and the committee before that to implement at their discretion what distinct is. If we wanted to do it any other way, it would probably involve setting out a pretty onerous paragraph, setting things out. So to me, I would be okay with specifying what neighboring is. I actually, unless we dramatically rethink this, I would leave distinct to the discretion of the committee and the trustees. Leave it as is.
I personally like that suggestion. I'm wondering, is that something that would have to be like a disclaimer or reminder in the admin procedure for the school naming committee to remind them that this is something they need to consider when they're looking at names? So it'd be up to the staff, for example, to bring up a list of names that are similar enough for the school naming committee to then say, no, we think this is distinct enough to proceed. I guess that's a suggestion for the AP, right, for the administrative procedure?
Sorry, can, just to clarify, so Joanna, what you're suggesting is when the naming committee presents the suggested names to the board of trustees, that they're going to include, oh, and by the way, we have these other schools that share one of the names. So for example, oh, we're suggesting we're going to name this school Cedar Ridge, knowing that we already have a school called Iroquois Ridge. We're going to name this school Harmony Grove, knowing that we already have a school called Pine Grove. And on and on. Is that what you're suggesting?
What I'm suggesting is that the naming committee would be made aware by staff who are leading that committee that there are, it would be presented with a list of names that might be deemed as similar to the recommended names that are brought forward. The committee would then assess and come to a collaborative decision on whether they believe those names are distinct enough to proceed or eliminate one of the options because it is too similar to a school name already within our board. And so by the time those options come for a vote to the trustees, it would be known that the school naming committee had already made that assessment.
The AP will almost certainly need to be updated when we finalize changes to policy and procedure. In the existing AP, the, there's already a disagreement with, with the policy because the AP says be distinct from other school names in Halton. And the policy says, and neighboring boards. So that's one thing that will have to be brought up. So the question of what is distinct, I still, I think it's a judgment call because you can sit there and say, these sound too distinct to me. And I sit here and, these don't sound distinct to me, and I sit here and go, yeah, no, I'm okay with those. I would not approve if we were sitting here today and Central, a new Central did not exist and someone brought one of them forward, I would not be approving it. But Pine Ridge and Iroquois Ridge, that's okay to me. Pine Ridge and Pine Grove, that's too similar for me because they, the focal word is being shared. So to me, it is a judgment call and it will rest with the committee and the trustees at the time that the renaming is occurring.
Thanks, Robbie. Carolina?
I just wanted to echo the comments that Robbie said and just to confirm that staff are looking to update the AP so that it's in alignment with the policy and the GP once it is approved. Also too, I know it's going to be ongoing practice for whenever there is a committee struck that the committee is well aware and acquainted with what's in the policy and the expectations in the policy in terms of the requirements and the criteria that, you know, names have to pass. And so they would be aware of what neighboring means if there's a more thorough definition provided. And then also have a bit of a discussion around distinct. But staff wouldn't have an issue with identifying names that are similar for the consideration of the committee. And they can be that first line of review. And then if it passes that test, it goes to the trustees and there's a second opportunity to determine whether or not it's distinct enough, if that helps.
Thank you, Carolina. I'll go to Jean.
Could I suggest changing the word distinct to be entirely different? And I hear what you're saying, Robbie, that you could go with Pine Grove, Prime Nest, or Pine this or that. But if we just, the English language is so large. Surely the goodness we could come up with something that's just entirely different. That there's no duplication of a word or two words within a, now I was thinking maybe people might have rhymes or something that, something may sound similar because it rhymes with another school, but just entirely different. Why couldn't we just use that and that would give guidance to the committee to really, you know, come up with something unique?
All right. Thank you, Jean. Margot?
So mine's just a quick one. So I agree with Jean that maybe changing the wording might be better. But I think actually the last word that you said was better, was unique. Is looking at unique names versus, I know it's very similar to distinct, but I think there's a slight difference. So that might be another opportunity. But again, I, coming back to what you were saying, Robbie, because it's so subjective, is it something that should be a guiding principle? Because if we're all looking at it differently, does that even need to be there? That's just my question.
If I could just add to support Margot's contention there, unique says that it's being the only one of its kind unlike anything else. So like that word could be used and could work.
I hear that. But that would preclude the use of many, many names that are not necessarily similar to Robbie's point or Tanya's point, the example of Cedar Ridge, Iroquois Ridge. Ridge is the only thing that's shared, but it's the first, right, name? So I think that needs a bit of, a bit more discussion, yeah.
I, I don't know that it helps with my, with my coding hat on, unique means not exactly the same. So the example that Tanya gave earlier of Mary Shad versus Mary Ann Shad, that would actually be unique from one person's perspective. And it's, I understand the intent and what it got me thinking about. And the AP is structured differently than the policy structure. The AP has this consideration will be given to, and then submissions must also X, Y, Z. And so it's possible that, I think I like it better where it is now and that it must, as a must command, it must not be the same as something else versus as consideration is unique. So I'm still open to suggestions on wording on that. But I'm not, I don't resonate with that particular one.
All right, Margot?
So I'm still, I'm just still the active speaker. So I was just, again, I'm thinking with the subjectivity of this piece, doesn't need to be in there? But that's my question. So because we're all looking at it from different lenses, looking at it from different ways, do we need to include that? Because we're all going to approach it differently. So it's not really a guiding principle because we're all guiding ourselves in different ways. So it just doesn't need to be in there.
I'm still in yes, because even though it's subjective, it is forcing both the committee and trustees to evaluate that as a criterion. And yes, it is subjective, but it's putting it in front of us.
Okay, thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, so to your point, Robbie, I, yeah, new Central and Central, that would be hard no. What are you doing? But when they do share the second word, like Grove, we already have two schools with Grove as a last name. Do I want a third school with Grove? No. So I think it, I want the word distinct to be in there because I don't want us to have the same, at least the same first word. You know, Maple Grove, Maple Glen, Maple Ridge, Maple, like that's just nonsense. So in that sense, I want us to keep the word distinct because I don't want us, you know, alphabetically, Maple, Maple, Maple. Am I okay with the second term being the same? Yeah, maybe for one or two schools I'm okay with. But when you're coming up with three schools with the second word that's the same, like to Jean's point, there's so many words in the English language, like let's, let's put on our thinking cap. So to me, I'm okay keeping distinct in here as long as we can include some sort of parameter, and again, this is out of our purview, but include some sort of parameter in the AP to show that due diligence was done. Saying, yes, we recognize that there's already five schools with this word in common, but it's still valid. So and then I'm still, I still need clarification on what neighboring means. Is it just neighboring as in, you know, border wise? So Peel and Hamilton and the ones north of us? Or do we include something as big as TDSB and York? Because like geographically, we're so similar, and not similar, we're so close to each other. So I think neighboring, we may need to define.
This is finally clicking in my brain in a way that I might work. One of the challenges about being entirely distinct in the way that it's set up right now is we don't distinguish between HDSB and neighboring school board names. So if we want to be entirely distinct and share no words, under the current policy, it has to share no words with any neighboring board. And I don't think we want to be that restrictive because that does narrow the possibility space. But it might be that what we need is two bullets here. And that we have a more onerous distinction from HDSB schools and a less onerous restriction that says, we're not going to replicate a school name that isn't one of our neighboring boards. But if we have Pine Grove and they have Pine Wood, that might be okay. Something, something along those lines where we're just splitting out those bullets. Anyway, we've spent a, I thank everyone for their input on this. I was expecting a lot more feedback on the GP.
Okay, so I take it our discussion on the policy is concluded. And now we're moving on to 4.2.2, which is the accompanying governance procedure. And I see Tanya on the list.
So I was trying to, so when I, when I read a GP, in my mind, I do a workflow and I make sure that everything works out. Works out. I can't remember the word. Connects, it goes, it flows and we're not jumping things. So I have a few questions. I think you can read my chicken scratch, so I'll give you my chicken scratch notes. But when it came to section eight, I got confused because things were a little bit all over the place. So actually, let me, let me go back to 7.3 if I can. 7.3 reads that within one week of receipt, the chair shall acknowledge receipt of the school name Seven point three reads that within one week of receipt, the chair shall acknowledge receipt of the school name change request. I do have some rewording suggestions. I'll give those to you after. And it says, and share the name of the affected school and the rationale for the request with all trustees via email. Goes on to say, the requesters name will be shared with trustees only if they consent to have their name published. If I could make a suggestion, could we, could we perhaps change the last two lines to read? Rationale for the, okay, share the name of the affected school and the rationale for the request with all trustees via a private slash confidential email. Instead of adding, the requesters name will be shared with trustees only if they consent to have their name. Only if they consent to have their name published. Can we just take that out entirely? Because if the name is shared with trustees and it's noted as it's confidential or private. We're not allowed to share that information anyway. And I don't know, maybe I'll look to the rest of the trustees. What their thoughts on, like I personally, if someone is making a request for us to review a school name. I'd like to know who, who's making the request to try to understand where they're coming from. And to have their name only shared if we get their permission for their name to be published. We won't be publishing it. It'll just be shared with us via a private email. So I'll, I'll go to other trustees.
I've got two people on the list, hopefully answering Tanya's question. Jean?
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying, Tanya. However, I would hate to have people not submit a request if, because we're making it mandatory that their name is able to be shared. Even if confidentially among the, the trustees, the board of trustees. I, I, I think that if, if people in this day and age with all the issues that are going on and security and politics and all the rest of it. Somebody wishes not to have their name known, even if guaranteed confidentiality of this group. But they still wish to have their name not known. I, I think they should have that opportunity.
Thank you, Jean. Donna.
Thank you. I'm actually in agreement with Tanya on this one. Just because I think them not having to get permission, I think it will preclude nuisance or frivolous requests. I, I worry about, I know that when we do school naming, they always have to weed out the Rubber Ducky School and the Scholey McSchoolface and, and things like that. And just people can just write anonymously and things like that. But I think the other side is, if they do strongly enough to make a complaint about the school. They should be able to stand and say, this is what I believe, this is why I'm saying this. And I think it would stop anything frivolous or nuisance requests. So I would lean towards what Tanya is suggesting.
Okay, and I hear both of you. And what I'm understanding is that, Tanya, you're asking for the trustees would be made aware of the, the name. It just would not be published and would be made aware of the name even if the person does not want it published. Meaning whether they want it published or not, trustees would be made aware.
Correct. Because at this point, at this point in the steps, we're just, a request has been received by the chair and vice chair. No decisions have been made. So this step here is just letting us know that Jane Hancock sent a request to rename, to, to review. School name X, Y, Z. So as trustees, the eleven of us would receive that email. We would read Jane's email. We would read her rationale. So we understand who it is. And it could be, to Donna's point about, you know, the frivolity of some of the requests. It could be that if the school is in one of our wards, we know of an ongoing issue. We know of a relationship between this person and the school. So it, it could add context to, to the request. So at this point, no decision has been made on next steps. It's just a matter of all eleven of us knowing, here's the email that the chair and vice chair received. And we're sharing it with the group and it's confidential.
All right, I'll go to the next speaker, Amy.
Not sure how I feel about this, to be quite honest. We get very few requests to rename. And I don't think we've ever had one that was frivolous. I, I could be wrong, but I don't think we ever had a request to rename that was frivolous. I have to wonder why. That information would be important to trustees to know who submitted the request. We don't know who submits suggestions for a new name. Only that they're submitted through. Public library or one of the neighboring schools. I, I think it's almost invasive to want to know the name of the person requesting that a school be renamed. It seems too much to me.
Okay, I'll go to. I wanted to go to Navid, but I'm not sure how to, he's a first time speaker, but I'm not sure how to. Are you? Okay, all right. Over to you, Margot. Thank you.
Hello, okay, thanks Joanna. So I'm going to lean on the side of both Tanya and Donna. I think that. We have to recognize that by us as trustee, knowing the name, it's not publishing the name. Publishing the name is meaning that you're publishing it out to the world. This is just a knowledge fact. I think it creates accountability because again, to the frivolous piece, whatever you want to say. If you are requesting a name change, you need to be, you need to own that, you need to own, own that decision. So I think it's, I, I think it's really important that we are made aware, again, in private, not published, in private message. Just like the private agendas that come out from Carolina have the password so that they're not shared with anybody else. But I think it's an important piece to the, to the process.
Okay, Carol.
I would agree that I don't really understand what the logic is. It's not explained. In terms of looking at the process, I think maybe, I don't know if it needs to be there, but it appears to me that. A request to rename a school would go to the director's office to staff. I'm not sure who in the director's office would actually receive this. And then that would be forwarded by the director to the chair. And then the way it's written, only the chair would know where that came from. And they would then forward on this information, but redact the name. And I don't really understand what the purpose would be. And I'm just, I guess I'm echoing what others have said, that as trustees, we deal with confidential information all the time. And if we're questioning our ability to manage confidential information, that's a much bigger question that goes way beyond this GP. So I'm, I'm less, I wasn't really thinking in the direction of frivolous requests or doubting the person. I think there's a situation in which there's information that the chair has. And I don't really understand how the chair, as, as a trustee, has a role to keep that information confidential, what the purpose would be. And I'm trying to think of another instance in which the chair possesses information that the rest of us are not allowed to see in, in a private or confidential way. So, and I think you were, Tanya, you were saying something about the chair and vice chair. But the way this is written, the director would forward the request completely with the identifying information to the chair only. And then that would sit, the way it's written, only with the chair. There's no publication at this point. This is entirely a confidential process, which any member of the public could be assured of when they reach out to the director's office with their request. That this will be kept confidential if that's a concern that they have.
Thank you, Carol. Carolina, I'd like to respond.
So I, I think there are a couple of points to be made with respect to this point. I think firstly, the sharing of personal information internally between trustees. There, there are provisions within the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection and Privacy Act that talks about the use and disclosure of personal information. And so just in hearing this discussion, I'm hearing that trustees feel that they need that piece of personal information to be able to make a determination as to whether or not it's a valid request or it's frivolous. Or so if you would perhaps allow me to take that piece of it back to discuss with staff that specialize in privacy, just to talk about. What the requirement really is there. There is also the piece around publishing, which I think that's perhaps a subpoint to this main point. Because for publishing, you would want to obtain consent from that individual. And so that would need to be part of the form. And there's, there's particular wording that would need to be included that cites relevant legislation in that regard. And so if you just allow me to take that back, I think the discussion is, is clear in my mind. And I can certainly continue the discussion with the chair of the, of the committee and provide that information if, if that's helpful. But I think I, I hear the need that you're wanting to make those two things distinct and see, see how that could work. Does, would that work, Robbie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Carolina, for that recommendation. And next on the list is Navid.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I, I'm undecided. I see what Tanya is saying and what Donna is saying. I somewhat agree with them. The trustee and me wants to know who made the request. I'll be interested. But I also see the issues with the privacy. I'm reading seven point three with, with section eight and the eight point one addresses. The, with the, with the frivolous suggestions or requests. That the chair and the vice chair may determine prima facie that the request does not meet the criteria outlined in section seven point two. And then subsequently deals with how they are going to just discard the request and everything. So what I'm thinking is if. Like if we are going to violate the privacy of the individual. To me, actually, at this point, I, I thought about it and I'm interested in knowing the, the identity of the requestor. But at the same time, to me, what is more important is the request itself, whether the request meets the criteria outlined in section seven point two. Knowing the person or the requestor, yeah, sure, maybe I would be interested. But I would be more interested in whether the request meets the criteria or not. So we have a way of dealing with the actual request. So my suggestion is, yeah, sorry, there is no suggestion. That's what my, my opinion is like, I'll be more interested in dealing with the actual request. Thank you.
Thanks, Navid. One other thing that comes to mind here is, and perhaps I'm not understanding this. The, the request will be shared with all trustees before the chair and vice chair make the determination, correct? So. Does that not invite some objection then from fellow trustees? If the chair and vice chair make a determination one way and some of the other trustees want to go another way?
The chair and vice chair may make a decision at the same time that that notification is provided. So long as it's within one week. They're required to notify within one week. They're not required to make a decision within one week. Yes, absolutely. Trustees can object to a, a decision that is made. There is not. A procedure. Presently. In here. Can, can disagree with a, a, a decision that is made. But right now, the chair and the vice chair have the authority to reject a request outright. Any other pathway requires trustee approval.
Okay, thanks. Because that, that in my mind invites a bit of. Opportunity for disagreement and challenge, right? And then how do we move on? And in my mind, it's the, the, the request itself and whether it meets the criteria. That's the important piece, not who asked it. But the, you know, human nature is, is, you know, such that we might be curious. But the trustee and me simply wants to know the request and whether it's valid or not and move from that. And not allow any biases to, to come into that decision making. So that's something that I'm kind of quite aware of and, and keeping in mind as we, as we discuss this. Okay, next on the list is Tanya.
Yeah, so going, so now I'm in section eight, the different pathways. So the first one for eight point one, it's where the chair and vice chair may determine prima facie that the request does not meet the criteria outlined in section seven two. So to me, that's clear. A request comes in, criteria is not met, too bad, so sad. We're not going to review the name or we're not going to consider this any further. I don't think we need eight point one point one, which is the chair, vice chair will not bring a report to the board. If you're not going to do it, then you don't have to say it. I think it could, it could go back to maybe. You know, in the previous step in seven three where you're saying. Shall inform the trustees via email. Maybe the step there could be, shall notify the trustees that the request was denied because. You know, the guidelines were not met. So maybe it's. Let's write down what, what we want the chair and vice chair to do, not what we don't want them to do. So that's the only one I would tweak the wording for is eight point one point one. For eight point two. I understand what's being said here. However, when we're going in a linear fashion to determine the steps. It jumps to, so I'll read it out, eight point two point one. So this is where the chair and vice chair determine that the request meets the criteria. It says in two point one that the chair and vice chair will bring forward a report to the board recommending a school renaming be initiated as outlined in section nine. So then when I jump to section nine and I start reading it. It has, if the chair and vice chair conclude that the request meets at least one of the criteria. They shall bring forward a report to the board recommending a school renaming process be initiated. The report will include the rationale for the recommendation, blah, blah, blah. The report will include the rationale for the recommendation, blah, 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 and any relevant information from the director's assessment. So here's my question. How did we jump to getting the director's assessment? So linearly, it linearly, I don't know if that's a word, but you know what I mean? It doesn't make sense. Somehow we've we've missed a step in there. We're gonna write, the chair is gonna write a report with the director's assessment. But yet we haven't said that we have to go to the director for the assessment. So I think there's a a step in there. And then the next section two, it says to include an estimate the one-time costs. So again, logistically, it's not fitting in. So I think we need to maybe look at eight point two and nine point one at the same time to see if if it flows. And then with section eight point three, I think we're running into the same problem again, where the chair and vice chair are going to bring forward a report. Recommend, sorry, the chair and vice chair will bring forward a report to the board recommending the director provide a report to the board. So so this is, I think, maybe we can take this offline to like work through a timeline as to how the chair and vice chair would get information from the director and request that information to put it in a report to come to the board. Does that make sense?
Yes, we let's take that conversation offline.
Okay, thank you. I will go to Navid and then Amy.
Sorry, just wanted to quickly say that chair and vice chair determine prima facie that the request does not meet the criteria outlined in seven point two. And they will notify the requister and the trustees. Isn't that the same thing that we do with the delegations also, right?
Right in here, that last part?
Do we do the same thing with the delegations? Like delegations come to the chair and chair decides, yeah.
Okay, Amy.
I wanted to respond to the conversation regarding the chair and vice chair making the determination about whether or not it meets the criteria. And in the current version, it's the director that's doing that. And the reason why that was changed to the chair and vice chair is because whether or not a renaming should be commenced or initiated is really a political decision, not an operational decision. And and so it was moved from the director's purview to the the chair and vice chair. And that's why that has been moved into that realm. And now, as Navid has so graciously pointed out, it mirrors the the way we handle delegations where the chair and vice chair will determine whether or not a delegation meets the requirements and notify all trustees if one is being rejected. And as well as letting trustees know if one has been accepted because it appears on the agenda. So it's it's a similar process piece there. And I just wanted to highlight why that change was made and why it's similar to the delegation process. Hoping that that clarifies it.
Thank you, Amy.
And now and now it's twelve thirty here, so I'm gonna have to say good night.
Thank you very much for joining us, Amy.
Thank you.
Safe travels, good night. Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker, and that's Tanya.
Yeah, so I I'm actually happy with the change that it's the the request goes through the director's office, but it gets shipped to the chair. Because school naming is within our purview. So I think give us ownership over that. The one thing I thought of as we're going through the steps and share your thoughts, instead of having the chair and vice chair go through the different criteria, would it be perhaps beneficial for the chair and the trustee for that school to be involved in that process? The trust and I and I'm thinking of this because if the trustee for that school is involved, it very possible that they have, they know the history, they know about the community, they can offer up information to to you know, be 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 part of the process. And I think if you're having a trustee write a report to the board saying that, yes, my school should be renamed because you've got you've got accountability from that trustee representing their ward versus other people telling that trustee that your school should be renamed. So I'm just wondering what's what are other trustees' thoughts on instead of the chair and vice chair, perhaps the chair and the trustee for for the ward? And if the chair is the trustee, well, we'll come up with that idea later. But just food for thought, chair and trustee versus chair and vice chair.
What does everybody think about that? And would you consider perhaps chair, vice chair and the school trustee? So you have three people and one of them is not, two are not intimately involved with the school. Any thoughts? Robbie?
I'm I'm intrigued by the suggestion. My my immediate curious question is, do we have local trustee defined anywhere else in our bylaws, procedures, policies? I'm seeing a yes from Margot. We struck that one of the things I was taught in my governance training was that we are responsible to the board and and not to our local area. And just wondering if if we already have that somewhere in our policy that we can reference to, or if we're creating a new definition of a local trustee in so doing?
Now, for our school boundary reviews, right? We do, yeah, we do have the local trustee and and for school naming committee, we also use the term local trustee. So where does that leave us on the suggestion of adding a local trustee? Or swapping out for the vice chair? Navid?
So local trustee gets involved when the matter's progress further because they will be on the the naming or renaming committee anyway. When the the suggestions come up and and the meetings takes takes place and the community consultations start. At this time, I think it's just going to complicate things. That's, in my opinion, it should be a simple process, the way we deal with the delegations. Local trustees, definitely, they get involved with the the naming. That's what my opinion is.
Okay, so you prefer to stay with chair and vice chair?
Margot? I see both sides because, Navid, you brought something up that I think because if there is a renaming that the local trustee is on that board and they will then be tainted or have that previous knowledge as to why the the issue came up. However, I see the other side of things as well in knowing the history and the background of the of the community. So I think that piece is a really important piece to to bring to the board before we get to that renaming process. But I think that's a really interesting piece that you brought up about the idea that if it does go forward, you're gonna be on the board again, and you've already made a decision as to what you're doing. So interesting. But I I think that it is important to have a local trustee involved just because they have their ear to the community and they're on any other board that's got to do with boundaries or reviews of their schools, even though, as you said, we are responsible for all health and schools. But we are elected by our local people.
And how Joanna pointed out just now about the boundary review process, local trustees get involved, but at a much later stage when the community consultations take place and then not right from the beginning.
But they don't chair that committee. It's an out-of-area trustee that chairs the committee. Okay, next, yeah. Next on the list is Donna.
Thank you. I'm gonna say that I fall in the camp that the local trustee should be should be one of the ones on, I think, chair, vice chair, and local trustee, because I do believe they bring a knowledge and a perspective that the chair and vice chair from possibly another municipality might not have. And I I think it's also a way that the local trustee has a chance to to see it, to have some input before it becomes a report to the rest of the trustees. I think that's a proceed to the local trustee and a significant step.
Okay, so what to do with this now?
I'm I'm hearing leaning towards chair plus vice chair plus local trustee. One of the things that does is creates an odd number of participants, which was striking me as how do you resolve a dispute if you've got two on two different sides of the fence? Three, at least you can get a majority vote. The the one challenge, of course, is that the more people you add in the mix and you're trying to do something quickly and get moving, it's harder to schedule. But I I I'm hearing that that's the direction that folks want to go, and I'm perfectly happy to go in that direction.
Okay, great. So you'll be able to make those changes. Anything else on this GP? Any other comments, questions? I'm seeing none. Okay, so thank you, Robbie, for your work on this. It looks like you've got a few more things to consider. And so will that be then coming back to the board or?
I will discuss with committee and Carolina whether this comes, edits are made and it comes straight to board or whether it needs to come back in.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we will move on to item five point O committee, starting with standing committee updates. And item one point, sorry, five point one point one, board self-assessment. And I'll speak to that. Last spring, the committee with your input finalized the questions for the board self-assessment survey for 2024. The link to the survey was shared with you early last week. And we recognized that everyone is at different stages of completing. So we thought that we'd pause the meeting, the the live stream, and take a ten to fifteen minute working session so that you can, for those of you who had not been able to open the link or start the survey, or for those of you who are near finishing it, can get some work done, get that going. And then you can complete that on your own time, or maybe you'll be done. So we will pause the live stream and we'll take a recess, we'll take a recess, too. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, everybody. We'll move on to agenda item 5.1.1.2. And Robbie's out of the room, so can we skip over to 1.1.3 Trustees Professional Development? Carol, thank you.
Yes, so a big thank you to Manager Khan for arranging our next PD, which is Governance. And that is the last week of this month. She also sent out, thank you, a spreadsheet where we can add any specific questions for the presenter. So just a reminder to everyone to please submit through that Excel spreadsheet your Governance questions by next Wednesday, so that the presenter has them a week before the session itself, which is at the end of this month. In addition to that, we are looking forward to PD that will be facilitated by staff. And Director Ennis is coordinating that and Superintendent Petco on Indigenous education and our associated policies. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carol. Any questions for Carol on this topic? Tanya?
Quick question, Carol. You mentioned Manager Khan sent out an Excel spreadsheet. Can you tell me when that was sent out?
So, oh, sorry, that was on October 3rd. The spreadsheet was shared with everyone. It's called Governance PD 2024. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll ask everyone to have a look at that spreadsheet sent out on October 3rd from Manager Khan. And please list your questions for the upcoming professional development sessions. Thank you, Carol. And we will go back to item 5.1.1.2 Governance Document Review. Robbie, is there anything else on this topic?
No.
Wonderful, thank you very much. And now on to Financial Advocacy, and Kelly is the Chair of that.
Thank you. We had a bit of a planning meeting today in advance of the Striking Committee when it becomes the Fair, the Financial Advocacy Committee. So we did a review and we looked at the things that need to be done, such as the community, the community meeting, been sharing with Info. And one of those things, we recently, we all received a letter from someone, I believe in Milton, regarding the use of tax dollars and them not understanding because they thought they, why our school council's fundraising because of the huge amount, amount of tax dollars that are going into the towns. And so we thought that maybe that could be part of the information that is shared when we do the town hall, when we're looking at sharing about the status of how things are with the board. The other pieces that we looked at were, recently, we just received through the OPSVA email, the 2025-26 Education Funding Engagement Guide. And in it, there is a series of questions that are being asked for feedback from the boards. So I just sent out an email to everyone asking for your input. The committee would like to receive it by October the 29th, so that we could then compile it and review it, so that we could use it for submission to the ministry. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Kelly and the committee on this topic? Okay, thank you very much. So now we'll move on to, oh, somebody's, no. All right, now we'll move on to Board Committee Updates. Are there any? Not seeing any updates at this point. On to item 6.0, and that's trustee questions of clarification. Okay. Carol?
Thank you. So I would like to put a question out to trustees to get some feedback. Is Director Ennis still on the call or no? Do we still have him? No, okay, so just to trustees right now. So on June 19th, at our board meeting, I brought a motion asking for trustee support to request staff to conduct or to facilitate obtaining a partnership with a third party to conduct some research on antisemitism in our board. So the conclusion of the conversation on the 19th was to pass a motion that in, in, sorry, that didn't, sorry, we didn't pass the original motion. Let me rephrase that. We did pass a different motion that asked staff to look at the feasibility of conducting this research and using a third party to do so. The first board meeting of September, we received a report from Research, and we all have that, and we, I think we discussed it briefly. We did learn that the Research Department was not aware at the time of producing the feasibility report that the intention was to mirror the work that was done in 2021 that resulted in the Student Voices Report on Anti-Black Racism. So that was information that Research didn't have. So they had prepared a feasibility report that looked at conducting a entirely digital survey, whereas the intention of the original motion was really to mirror the work that was done in 2021. So that's where we left it. I'm just asking trustees today to reach out to me at some point between now and the deadline for the submitting motions for the next board meeting in November, to let me know, or you could right now, any of your thoughts on whether or not you would like to revisit that original motion based on the feasibility report that staff brought back? I would ask Director Ennis, if he was here, for his thoughts on that as well. I know that there are some initiatives, I'm not aware of what they are, but I know that Director Ennis has indicated there are some initiatives around antisemitism mitigation in our schools. I'm not sure if it's directed at staff or students or both. We don't have any information on that right now. As far as I'm aware, we have not been provided any information on work that's been done to survey student experience, either of antisemitism or mitigation of antisemitism. So that question still stands. And like I said, I'm just putting that out to trustees to gauge interest in perhaps revisiting that or that having me represent that motion at our next board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, Carol, thank you. So what I'm hearing is you'd like to close the loop on your original motion. And there is some interest in learning about what is currently taking place at HDSB with respect to gaining insights into students' experience around antisemitism. So I'll pass it over to Tina.
Thank you. So we are, we're prepared to share, and Assistant Principal Walker has joined us online to share some of the, of the things that we're doing in terms of learning. So we can pass that piece over to her and then the other piece around how we're collecting data. We can take that to Research and come back with it. Oh, well, we might be able to answer both questions then. So why don't we start with Assistant Principal Walker? Hi, Shalida.
Hi, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, perfect. I'm sorry, I'm having computer challenges, so I'm on my phone. So I'll keep camera off if you're okay with that. But thank you so very much, Tina, for your question and, and what we have been doing in our plan for this year. So as you know, last year, we did forward through the Director an outline of the offerings that we had offered, both from our department as well as School Programs Department, specific to affirming, affirming Jewish identity as well as addressing antisemitism. This year, we continue with the work. We currently have some series of learning that are offered for staff. We're starting first with our administrators. We have four sessions booked, specific to addressing antisemitism, looking at the historic and contemporary aspects of antisemitism, and examining some of the tropes that exist, as well as responding to and educating administrators on what to look for as it pertains to antisemitism. So we have four repeated sessions, two in the fall and two in the winter scheduled for that. We did, we also have a, we haven't set a date yet, but with another, we have for grade six in particular, we have with Facing History in Ourselves that they have a workshop that they provide specifically to grade six educators that will help to hone in on the ministry's curriculum expectation or learning expectation around affirming Jewish identity. And that title is Introducing Jewish History, Heritage, and Community. And that explores Jewish communities within the Canadian context and the diversity, and the diversity that exists with them. And then they also, we're looking at secondary educators with, and that one is with a key focus on the Holocaust and genocide education. And then, and then the ones that we have for students would have, would come through elementary and secondary school programs. We don't have something set as yet, but we are in conversations with them to see if there's anything that they will be bringing forward within the year that is specific to, for students, whether that's resources or student presentations, et cetera. So that's what we have planned for this year, building on the work that was done last year. I'll turn that back over to Associate Director Tina Summing.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know if we want to honor any questions now for that piece, or if we want to move on to Dr. Bichelia to answer the second part of Trustee Baxter's question first. Why don't we move on to Dr. Bichelia then? Hi, Rosanna.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me and see me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, okay. Well, thank you so much for having me. So as I understand, the question pertains to whether we're gathering data on antisemitism incidents and the response to those, is that correct? Okay, so, yeah, so I think this question came up at the last board meeting, and we don't have data that speaks specifically to incidents of antisemitism. However, I recall trustee, or sorry, Superintendent Pacco at that board meeting really discussing the fact that we know from, you know, other data sources, province-wide, that antisemitism is, of course, unfortunately, very well unalive in our society, and that comes into our schools. So with that knowledge, the Human Rights and Equity Department, just as Principal Walker mentioned, there's been numerous activities that have been happening from both professional development, but also learning for students in the classroom. And these have been happening and ongoing for several years. So, you know, the expectation really is that the board is responding to incidents of antisemitism and that, you know, we haven't been standing idle just because we don't have actual numbers or, you know, data that has been gathered in a, in an organized manner. So I know that, you know, the feasibility report may not have spoken directly to a Student Voice report, similar to what was done for anti-black racism. But much of the content that applies for a survey would also apply to hiring an external agent to come in and would also apply to hiring an external agent to come in and do focus groups. So if this is the direction that the trustees would like to venture in, the feasibility report would still apply, because we would still need to do, you know, vetting of the external agency. We would need to engage in purchasing department, you know, third-party agreements, data privacy, and so forth. If the Board of Trustees is intending on, you know, asking the Research Department to undertake this work, we would be happy to support it. I would also state that my recommendation would be to broaden the scope so that we are looking at how HDSP responds to acts of hate. Because certainly antisemitism is alive and well, but we also know that our students and parents and our communities are large are also faced with other types of forms of hate. And so I think from an operational perspective, the next step that would follow from a report like the Student Voice, how does the HDSP respond to anti-black racism? It would actually be how does HDSP respond to acts of hate? And given, you know, what is happening around the world, I think that would be the next best step for us that would, that would help to inform and refine the plans that, you know, Principal Walker just mentioned. So I'll offer that suggestion, but I'm also here to answer any questions or address any concerns that you may have.
Thank you very much for that feedback, Rosanna. Are there any further questions for clarification on this, Carol?
No, I don't think I really have any questions. I was intending, or what I wanted to do was to confirm that my understanding was correct. So we do not currently have data. I believe at the last meeting, we did hear that there will be data intentionally collected going forward, so starting now. When there are incidents of bullying or suspension, the directive will be for administrators to indicate what kind of hate was engaged in as opposed to just a general hate. So we did hear that. But I think what I'm hearing is that the board has currently not undertaken to gather data on either the frequency of incidents of antisemitism or how students are experiencing antisemitism, either in the past or currently within the board. So the original intent of the motion, I think it's still, it has not been fulfilled, I guess, is what we've confirmed, that that information is still not available to staff. And just to sort of reiterate, and I will send out the report again to refresh trustees' memories of what it was we were discussing, but the idea being that hate does mutate, unfortunately, and antisemitism has existed for a very long time, and it has existed in different forms throughout time. And so understanding, and I believe Trustee Zhang had touched on this, that understanding the root of hate currently helps to ensure that mitigation is done appropriately and correctly. So the idea was to ensure that the understanding is there, exactly what's happening in our schools and how students are experiencing that mitigation. And what I learned from the Student Voices report in 2021 was what students were really seeing and experiencing in schools, and also they had comments on how mitigation was working. And I thought that information was valuable, and I know I've heard that it's informed decisions at the board. So my thinking was that antisemitism could be treated in the same way. So again, I will, I will send an email to all trustees with that report again, because of course, it's buried very much in your, in your email inbox at this point, and then just ask for, for feedback to inform next steps. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that, Carol. I see that Shalita has her hand up to respond, but I'll first go to Tina.
I just wanted to confirm, yes, that we did hear from our Superintendent of Safe Schools that we are trying to segregate the good data when it comes to suspension. So that is, is a change this year. And I guess also to reiterate, but Director Ennis said that, you know, we are actioning the work, and we, we hope that it's reassuring to trustees to hear from Assistant Principal Walker tonight, that even though the data has not been collected, that we're not sitting idly and we're trying to be responsive, but there's always more work to do, as we all know, so.
Okay, thank you, Tina, and over to you, Shalita.
Thank you so very much. Just to, in response to the data collection, I do want Trustee Baxter to know that our department informally and more so from the incidents that come through our office, so not a comprehensive in terms of every single incident that occurs within, within the board, but certainly to our department, we have started to make notations of the various forms of racism or discrimination that comes to our department and that we're broadly aware of. So we do, we do have that data that we have started to collect since September.
Carol?
Thank you, Shalita, for sharing that. I'm just wondering, is that information that can be shared with trustees? Because we haven't seen any information, I don't think, as trustees about what is happening in schools from the board. I hear from parents and community members, and I know that some trustees have sat in on meetings where community members, and specifically parents, have shared information, and I've heard from students who have contacted me to share there, but that, again, is, has not been collected in a, in an intentional way. So I'm just wondering, is that something the Human Rights and Equity Department could share with trustees and the interim?
So why don't we take that back to have a conversation with our, with the department and with Director Ennis and C., just to take a look at, we don't want any identifying information, those kinds of things, but what we might be able to do. So let, let's take that request back.
Okay, thank you very much. And next on the list is Jean.
Thank you very much. I wasn't sure if this came under trustees' questions of clarification or upcoming trustee news or board committees. It's the OPSWA report. Where would that come under? I can do it right now. Just very quickly, folks, Central West meets on Saturday at Stratford. Is anybody planning to attend?
I'll be there.
I will be there, and I think Donna is going to try to be there. I'm not sure.
Donna will be there.
Donna will be there, all right. Thank you. Okay, the two of us.
I'm sorry, point of clarification, Jean. I cannot read the room. Who have their hands up, because I can only see you on the screen.
Oh, that would be you and me, Donna, that are planning to attend. The other thing is, is that the Education Governance Week is coming up. I think it's maybe even this week. I know I've got three schools to make presentations to. You've all got the information. The OPSWA sent out PowerPoints and other data and information that, to help you with your presentation. So please, if you are planning to make a presentation at a school, if anyone can take a picture and if you could send it to OPSWA, they'd be very happy to have that information. And certainly, if you didn't get pictures but just sent a note to OPSWA that you were able to make three or four presentations, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jean. Any other trustee news for Item 7.0? Okay, not seeing any. The agenda has now been exhausted, and I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Lovely to see you all.